...to order. The first order business is the appointment of alternates. And we're missing two regular members, so we'll appoint Gavin for Mike Doyle and Joe for Dave Ryan. Second order business is the approval of the minutes of the January 7th meeting.
Kevin, I've read those meetings and I was -- minutes and I was present for them. I think they're suitable the way they are, so I move that we accept them as they were submitted without correction or.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right. First, well, actually, if we could, if we would do a motion to add, later on in the agenda, under general commission business, we would like to add the, what is the name of the organization? SL Simsbury request for certificate of occupancy. We talked about this at the last meeting, but if we could add that to the agenda under general commission business. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. And second?
Second.
All right. Second from Gavin. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll take that up later. All right. Public hearings. I'm not sure if I read the public hearing now. All right. Application 1901 of Powderman Spirits Company LLC. Frank Luca, Principal GM, Allen W. Hickson Family Trust Owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regs for a small craft distillery on a property located at 738 Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map H10, block 227, lot 003, zone SC3. Frank, you're up.
Frank Luca, 55 Copper Hill Road, Cranes Connect. So I'm trying to get the story going, where they need the permit so I can file with the federal government before the next shutdown. I'd like to get those in. That's why I didn't send them in yet, because the government was shut down. But any questions for me?
Yeah. If you could just go over, the diagram was blurry.
Yes. And I'm actually redoing that as we speak for the federal government that's going in tomorrow, so I will send a clean copy to carry in Mike's office. Upstairs, when you first walk in, the major room right there, that's going to be called the general premise, and that will be where we sell the bottles, T-shirts, whatever else. The room directly, if you're looking down at, to the right, the big room on the right there, we're actually going to do the distillation in there, so the stills will be all set up, so everyone can see them as they come in. Then the other areas on the top floor, the back room in the upper left-hand corner, that is going to be a locked room for storage of aging barrels and bulk whiskey and bonded bottles, which means as soon as the whiskey gets put in a labeled bottle and sealed, I have to pay an excise tax on it, and that's, now it's bonded liquor. So I have 15 days or less to get it out of that room and move it into the general premise or sell it to somebody else. So that room, it needs a double lock on the doors and all of that for the state and the feds, and that's going to be that room. Downstairs, so the whole upstairs except for the first room you walk into will be bonded, even the bathroom, so we can have liquor on tap in there if we really want. Then downstairs is also bonded premise, and down there on the, if you're looking down at the sheet to the left, that whole side will be to make the mash or beer for fermenting. We make a mash, we call it beer, and that's what you actually distill to make the whiskey. But that's the side we'll make that on. And then the other side will be bottling and labeling. We have a machine for bottling and labeling. And then the big room in the middle is actually an office and mechanical room, and we have to have a locked file cabinet for the TTB agents and the state when they show up, and it'll be in there with also a desk and all that type of thing.
It says TTB agent.
TTB is a division of the ATF, and I believe it's Tax and Tobacco Bureau, but it's basically the tax liquor and cigarettes and everything you deal with them instead of directly with the ATF. They're a division of that. And then the state, they're just the same thing. They come in and inspect you and find your booze.
How are you getting the barrels from upstairs to downstairs?
We are actually going to pump the mash from downstairs upstairs through it with a small pump into the stills. We'll distill it, the barrels will be filled upstairs, and then they'll be stored and aged or stored if we're not aging for like corn whiskeys and vodkas. We'll actually then pump that back downstairs to the bottling room to be bottled. So two little holes in the floor is going to save my back a lot of misery.
Do you have to do anything to the floor to hold all of it?
No. Everything's real light. Yeah, nothing, everything I have is small. I'm getting a new still built right now. It's three times as big as the one I have, and I can still pick it up and walk across the room with it. It's just, it's basically a big giant stock pot like you'd see at a clam bake, and we're welding copper on top of it.
How much liquid does it hold?
That holds 60. We usually, you don't fill them all the way up, so we'll probably distill 45 to 50 gallons, which gives you roughly two gallons of booze at 140 proof. And then you take that and you re-distill it again if you want to make something else, or you can proof it down by adding water and, you know, 80 proof, whatever you want to drink it out and sell it.
Let me offer a suggestion. We do these diagrams, put some dimensions on there.
Everything's getting done in CAD as we speak, so everything will be going in. That was last minute when I found out I had to get this application. I apologize for that.
So the only place that's open to the public is on the upper?
Well, once you're in, you can take a tour through the whole place.
Okay.
You know, but that's the general premise. We have bonded in general. Everything bonded, I have to be able to lock the public out of.
Right.
But I could, as long as I'm there, or somebody that works for me is there, we can have it open.
Okay.
But the idea is they come in the general premise.
Yeah.
Look over, the distillation room's right there, they can walk right in. We're not going to tell them no. They can come in and see what's going on and everything. Just when we close, we have to be able to lock everything separately.
Okay.
And what are the products at this point?
Bourbon, which we're going to start out with at least, well, it's been in a barrel nine months already, so we're going to start out with a six-month bourbon, basically, and higher, and then we're going to have a corn whiskey, which is just clear alcohol. And if you take the corn whiskey and distill it three or four more times, we'll have vodka. So by the end of the year, we'll open to have vodka. I'm working on it right now. It's pretty good.
So what is the target date for?
We were actually going to open this month at the other location, but then we decided that, you know, we had a move and everything, so we decided just to postpone everything, which we were just going to open up with the corn whiskey, which you don't age. But now, we're going to have two barrels. One's going to be six-month, and one's going to be nine-month, so we can open up with bourbon, which our main goal is, in the long run, is bourbon anyways. So we have to build the place out once the permit's approved. That's probably going to take another month, so we're hoping like right around spring we'll be able to open up. It's hopefully the whole thing's going to be built out in like a month, and then we're just going to sit there and wait for the state. The day after the state gives me my approval, I will soft open, which I won't announce it, but I'll open and people can start coming in, and then we'll have a hard opening like a month after the soft opening, so we can get everything set up and all that kind of thing. But we're open late spring, you know, May, June. I would like May, before I get busy in my other business would make me happy. Like right now, when I'm doing nothing, I can't do anything because we have no permits or anything, so.
So what is the federal permit that you're waiting for, that we're signing off by?
I have to get an amendment to move my federal manufacturing license from the current location. It shouldn't take as long as getting a new license, but I still have to go and apply and put everything in. I'm hoping that because I also have an explosives license for my other business, that this thing goes really quick. I'm going to make some phone calls and see if I can get it in the queue before the 15th seems to be the next magic day, so.
Any other questions, anybody? Anybody from the public? No? All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
All right. Joe, and a second from?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second public hearing is application 1902 of Anthony Piazza, agent town of Simsbury, owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M of the Simsbury zoning regs for construction in the floodplain on the property located at 36 Drake Hill Road. Assessors map H11, block 226, lot 001 and 001A, zone R40.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Anthony Piazza, Superintendent of the Water Control Facility. We're looking to install a 25 by 35 storage building on a property that's going to be on a concrete pad with a footing to handle the wind loads and snow loads of the area because it is going to be a metal building when it's all said and done. We're going to excavate down, excavate back, we're going to remove about a foot of soil, so it'll be at the existing rate of the driveway that's currently in place, and it's inside the protective berm of the plant.
What's going in the storage?
It's going to be for equipment that's actually in an open shed right now. We have pumps, portable pumps or portable generator, things like that will be inside this building.
Any questions?
Did you submit a picture of the building?
I did not, because we haven't bought the building yet. We're waiting for all the permits. We know the size that we want. We haven't decided on the design of it yet, but it will be a metal building.
And your application said it's within an existing berm?
Yes, inside the plant, yeah, the protective berm.
And we have a photo of that too, but just.
Yes.
Is it visible from Riverside?
No.
Or?
Won't be visible from anywhere.
Even the bridge, okay.
No, because it's pretty far.
Not unless you're inside the plant.
It looks like it's pretty far in from even the driveway.
Yes, correct, yes. It's behind, it's behind several buildings as it exists right now.
Could you just remind us, how high is the berm relative to?
Above, above the 100-year floodplain. It's three and a half feet above.
Well, in relation to this building?
In relation to this building?
Building's inside the berm, it's eight feet tall, 10 feet tall?
The berm will, the berm will actually be, it'll, the top of the berm will be even with the top of the building.
Okay.
It's a 10-foot tall, it's a 10-foot sidewall building, and the peak of the building will be at the top of the berm.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public? Bummer.
It's not that interesting.
I know, no one's interested in your building at the sewage plant. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Pardon?
Distillery was a little bit more excited.
Yes.
It was, yeah. Not much, I'm not sure.
I guess there are both different kinds of distillers, aren't there?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
All right. Joe made the motion.
Oh, Donna's got it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All business. Application 1901 of Powderman Spirits Company LLC. Frank Luca, you're back up.
Look at that.
Why are you hurt?
I don't know. Does anybody else have any questions that weren't answered in the public hearing? Do we have a motion there?
I'll make a motion.
We do have one.
Do we have a draft?
We have a draft.
Thank you. Did you know? Are you ready?
Sure, if you have the draft.
I do. I was just handed it.
Ah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve application 19-1 of Powderman Spirits Company LLC. Frank Luca, Principal GM, Allen W. Hickson Family Trust Owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8, H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a small craft distillery on the property located at 738 Hot Meadow Street. The special exception approval is subject to the following condition. Number one, administrative zoning permit is required for a change in use.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll have a second.
Joe's second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Good to go. Once you get the feds.
Good luck.
All right. All right. New business. Receipt of applications. We have application 1902 of Anthony Piazza. You're back. And the first one, 1902, is for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M of the zoning regs for construction in the floodplain on the property located at 36 Drake Hill Road. So here we're talking about just building within this floodplain, and next is the building itself.
Mr. Chairman, you have a staff report, both the site plan and the special exception.
I do.
It's two separate applications.
Right.
But I put a detached motion on there, calling on both applications, put some conditions on the site plan.
It's in 1902. It's the second to last page.
My staff report refers to both applications. It's the same activity and it's the same issues related.
So you're saying we can handle both at once?
You just, I have it in there, you're voting on, just the motion will be separated by application. The first one, special exception, second, site plan approval, site plan approval has some suggested conditions of approval.
So we still think we should do them separately, just, so if we have someone to make a motion on 1902?
I'll do that, Kevin.
Okay.
1902. A motion to approve application 1902 of Anthony Piazza, agent town of Simsbury, owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M of the Simsbury zoning regulations for construction in the floodplain on the property located at 36 Drake Hill Road.
That's it.
This.
I'll do this.
The second.
The conditions go with it, the site.
The conditions are the site plan amendment.
Oh, excuse me, okay. End of motion.
End of motion. Okay. Do we have a second?
I did.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, 1903 is the application of Anthony Piazza, agent town of Simsbury, for site plan amendment for the, bless you, for the construction of a 25 by 35-foot storage building on the property located at 36 Drake Hill Road. Do we have any discussion on this one?
Do you want to read in the?
I'll read the condition.
The site plan amendment?
No, I'm letting you do the motion.
Oh, I thought you were doing.
I was just reading what the application was.
No, I'm all set. I don't have any questions or comments.
Anybody? Let me have a motion.
Sure. Want me to read it?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve application 1903 of Anthony Piazza, agent town of Simsbury, owner, for a site plan amendment for the construction of a 25 by 35-foot storage building on the property located at 36 Drake Hill Road. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. Number one, an administrative zoning permit and a building permit are required for the shed's construction. Number two, an onsite pre-construction meeting is required prior to the start of site work with zoning enforcement officer and floodplain manager. Number three, no change in grade is permitted. Excess material from foundation excavation is to be removed from the site.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All right. Joe's second. Any discussion on this one? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approved unanimous. You got your building. All right. The next item on the agenda was application 1904 of the Gurneys, but the public hearing advertised, is advertised for March 4th, so at this point, there's no action needed tonight by us. And the next application is 1905 of Bill Fregno, Agent Sunlight Construction, Inc., owner for a site plan amendment to modify conditions of approval associated with zoning commission applications. I'm not going to name them all, for the Cambridge Crossing Development on the northerly side of Hoskins Road and the property formerly known as 22 Hoskins Road. 42 Hoskins Road and 54 Hoskins Road.
Good evening. I'm Bill Fregno for Sunlight. We are building, under your approval, a development on this Cambridge Crossing. So I guess the only development approved under the WHOZ zone, correct? I think so, so. So we're underway, and we've got model homes going up. We've got our kind of what I call Phase 1 of our, of our building. The development was approved in late 2015 as a single-phase development, but in actuality, because of the size of it, we're building it probably in about three phases. We started with, at Hoskins Road. We go in, turn the corner right behind the skating center, and go up to an intersection. So we realized that, and some of the homes we're building are under contract to be sold, and we have our first closing scheduled for, I think, April. But we realized that to be in strict conformance with the way that the site plan was approved, we would have to build all of the drainage structures. This is a, this is an LID design. We have a lot of sand and gravel up here, and we have underground structures, and we have rain gardens and so forth. Correct me if I'm stepping out of sequence here at any time, Mike, but we would have to build all of these features before we could get our first CO. In actuality, from an engineering point of view, probably only have to build the features as we go into the project, and so whatever drainage is needed for that particular area would serve the purpose from an engineering point of view, but it doesn't serve the purpose of the zoning approval that we got back in 2015. So we're seeking an amendment to that to allow us to construct only the structures that are needed in accordance with the recommendations of the town engineer and with the director of planning. There was something, there was some other language about dates in there too, I think, right?
Yes, correct. There was also some language on, as a second condition on Exhibit 2, dealing with certificate of occupancies outside of the growing season that allow this, you know, the ability to post bonds for stabilization, not just the yard, but some of the, some of the other improvements around the structures. The reality, we'll probably be coming in for a few COs during winter. Strict interpretation, the current approvals says he, as he discussed earlier, would have to have all the site work completed. This is a, it's a form of sand and gravel that really from erosion sediment control standpoint, provided there's source protection around where he's spreading topsoil, et cetera. We don't have an issue where you have erosion sediment control potential of leaving the site, causing an issue. It's really sites, you know, development specific to the area.
Right. So two things, I mean, we do, on that regard, I mean, the site is very well drained, and it's almost in a bowl, so we have zero erosion issues there. But we did, if you remember, we did actually post a separate erosion bond, but I think what Mike's also saying, we were willing to post another bond that would be to guarantee that all the vegetation is going right, with all the topsoil and all the plantings and whatnot. Similar to what we would do on a house-by-house basis if we don't have a, if it's during the winter months, for example, and we can't get the lawn in. Usually we do a little cash bond, but here we would do a larger performance bond to make sure that, that that work would get done.
This was discussed with town staff, and this was, both of us agreed this was a two-appropriate modifications to the approval in order to keep Mr. Fregno proceeding along on some of his causes.
To get the people in.
Yeah. And staff provided a map, and Ron, if you want to speak to the map. This is a tracking.
This is just my internal tracking. It shows you what's been permitted so far, what they pulled permits for so far. Is the pink, the green is the affordable units. So you can kind of see there what's been pulled for application permit so far are kind of in one area, so we'll call it a phase.
True.
So it makes sense kind of doing a bond for anything that's in that area would sit in. So we kind of talked about he'll put a bond up, and maybe that bond will just stay in place, and as we work through the site, depending on when the timeframes are and what it is, it will just work with each of the sections.
It seems logical just to keep the bond in place because there's, you know, really, the expense to me is minimal, and might as well just keep it there, and it would just apply to whatever properties that may not be finished at that time. So, just to be clear, so what we would be doing is, as I say, our first closing is scheduled for somewhere in mid-April, so I wanted to kind of flesh this out with you guys ahead of time. We would have the staff come out probably a good month before our first CO. I mean, they've been in there doing inspections and whatnot, but we would want them to see exactly what, what level of completion we have, and just to make sure that it does conform to this amendment, should you approve it. So the second, the second part of this is that, it's kind of similarly related, that we have an emergency access that was designed for this, and same type of thing, that it's way in the far back of this development. So it would be very onerous for us if we had to build that with these first set of closings. So what we're asking for, and this is kind of consistent, we have some other things like this that are tied into our progress, we would like to ask your approval to delay the installation of emergency access until our 60th CO. We have 70, 90 units, who are saying by the time we get to number 60 or before, we would have that, we would have that built.
Can I ask, staff, is that, is that safe? Is that acceptable?
It would mean that he's pretty much complete.
Yes.
If you were to look at the map, you're talking about the 60th CO, he would have just a few houses down in this area.
Yep.
With my pen is. So the bulk of that would be constructed. It's pretty, it's reasonable to say to delay for that.
Okay. And same thing with fire?
Yeah, the fire marshal.
Okay.
But let me, let me just add that we are in discussions with Mr. Kowalski and also with Chief of Police about adequate turnarounds.
Yep.
Because I'm sure they just want to go in and just dead-end it.
Sure.
So we have, wherever we are, we'll have provisions to provide a safe.
At that time.
Exactly. Okay. So we've got, we know where we're at right now. Kevin's going to come out and look and see, and I'm sure we can satisfy whatever his needs are.
Sure.
So you said phasing, so is this now Phase 1, kind of in the middle?
So, let me just make sure I'm not misrepresenting. So what I'm calling Phase 1 brings you away from Hoskins up to.
So, oh, this whole thing is Phase 1?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So I call it the T intersection.
The phase, all of it to there.
Yeah.
All the way up to the middle.
And then this diagram, where's the emergency exit?
Wherever you build a house, it would be next.
Okay.
It's, it's likely to be in this section.
All right, in the back.
That seems to be where it wants to be moving right now.
And they're okay with not having?
That goes out behind the skating saps. Oh, okay.
So there'll be only one way in and out first?
So this is one-way traffic?
Well, it will be at the end too, because this is, it's blocked.
Right. That's not.
Yeah, but you can get out that way.
And this is gated or something.
Fire.
Yes.
So what's the development?
But Donna, what we're saying is that it's still going to have to be okay with fire department, and that's not going to be our call. It's going to be.
No, it shouldn't be, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with the conditions subject to Kevin, you know, approving it. So we would want him to be, and again, my preliminary discussions, I think we'll be okay with it, but whatever he needs, we'll give him. I think, did I get everything, Mike?
For this one?
Okay. So the application, just to be clear, is the two items that are on Page 2 is what we're proving?
Are we actually, or is it receipt of, or is it something?
You can act on this tonight.
Okay.
It's just a site plan amendment. Alex, the staff has worked this out with the applicant, so we will, we're okay with approving as submitted, or as you've kind of suggested, you could condition it that subject to approval by Mr. Kowalski, by the marshal, if you were concerned with emergency access modification.
We need a motion here to approve basically as submitted with the addition.
I think that's Donna.
And that's, you don't have to read it. You just have to say approved as submitted. Subject to approval by the fire marshal.
So I'm going to approve.
The application is submitted.
The application is submitted, subject to approval from the fire marshal.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe?
For application 1905.
For application 1905.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, general commission business. Here's where we added in the request of S.L. Simsbury for, request for certificate of occupancy at 200 Hot Meadow Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with Ugo Orsini of the Silverman Group today. He's here to brief you. This follows from a letter which we wrote for clarification under the zone. The zone said that COs were not to issue unless 100% of all the site work was done, unless it was to the sentiment of the zoning commission. And talking with town staff, we want to make sure that we, that the commission had an opportunity to have their staff evaluate it and look at all the issues and make sure that it's appropriate in the area that we requested. We gave you all that information on that. We've, I, Mike probably gave his report, or Robin, but we're here for any, to answer any questions that you have. Ugo's here to answer any questions that you have. They're fully compliant, will be fully compliant with everything that any staff member has requested, including Fire Marshal Kowalski and Henry Miga and Mike.
Okay. And staff, you went out and visited the site, and we were, we had a bunch of concerns last time, and they've all been answered by the appropriate experts?
So we asked the fire marshal and building official to, as the commission asked, to assess whether they consider the site safe. You have an email from Kevin Kowalski, should be in your packet. He, he's okay with not only the current status of the site, but he also reviewed, you also have the fencing plan. It's a plan where the buildings are highlighted in yellow, some orange lines showing where construction fencing will be on. Henry Miga went out to the site today, and he had one concern, and that was the area for the parking that will be serving the unit, the first unit that will be coming in for certificate of occupancy, that appropriate measures are taken so that there's barrier fencing between residents and construction, because as you're driving along the access road, the two structures which are to the immediate south of the first building that will be coming in are still being framed and under construction. So those will still be an active job site while, while the public or residents will be going into the, to the site, the first one that will be requesting a certificate of occupancy. So his concern was, you know, providing a separation, residents are here, construction site is there.
Yeah.
And then making sure that, you know, that area is left open so you didn't have that potential conflict. One thing that S.L. Simsbury also did was they, they had started, and Ugo can talk about signage, they are trying to train their contractors that when they come into development, the construction traffic will take a left and go around towards the assisted living facility. The residential traffic, should a certificate of occupancy be issued, will go off to the right, and there will at least be a division from a traffic flow perspective between the two users. You also received a copy of phasing plan. I know that the commission, it was brought up at the last meeting about a phasing plan, and it's, it's color coded, phases one through six. This was based on the erosion sediment control and stormwater plans which were submitted. Just because we have that.
Yep.
So right now, the, the areas highlighted in yellow will be that first batch that would come in for certificate of occupancies. Of that TH26D is the first building. How many, how many people have been out to the site, maybe, just so you're familiar with the current status? It's the one, you can't, it's behind the larger multifamily building that's under construction right now, adjacent, just kind of southwest of the clubhouse. That's the building that will be coming in first as part of this first phase. We believe it's, TJ, how many, how many units in the first phase total? Is it 88?
Five in this building. Five in TH26 and four in 25.
And four in 25.
So it'll be nine in total in the first phase, the first group of buildings that we discussed at the last meeting, just to recount.
Twenty, I'm sorry.
Did you say two? 26D?
No, the yellow.
I'm sorry, it's yellow?
Yes.
The blue's three, it's four.
Yeah, I saw that, but that's what I was asking, that's why I was asking.
So the only, the only comment that staff has to you is whether the commission would like or performance bonds for some of the outstanding site work. You have stabilization measures around the buildings, some other site improvements that are outstanding. Under the code, you are, you have the ability to request a performance bond. Staff is looking for your guidance on this subject. And we, we're here to answer any other questions. And Rob, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, when you go out, they've done a really good job from January to now, sort of cleaning up the areas. When you look like this, I'm going to call it a courtyard right directly in front of the entrance when you come in on Cooper Ave, that had a big stockpile, that's been cleaned down. You know, they've cleaned up the best they can with the weather, a lot of the construction materials. I've talked to Ugo in the field a few times now about the importance of keeping separate our material stockpiles, our contractor parking, where they did, they did do a really good job at kind of calling out where their contractors are going to be parking, so not to intermingle with the residents out there. So they've been doing a lot of the things every time we go out that we've commented on, making sure to kind of get those in place. So the fencing plan right now shows kind of where they'll be in place initially. We talked about how that will kind of move as a building might get CO'd or the construction area changes, that fencing area will have to change. So it's kind of, you know, dynamic in that aspect. So that would just be something that we would work with them on as they, they kind of proceeded.
Personally, I'd be in favor of the performance.
Yeah, me too. Thank you to keep all of that.
And be consistent with what we just did.
Exactly, which we just did on a different property.
We'd be very pleased to have your advice to staff, that we work with staff to establish a number and provide appropriate bonds as we go forward.
And that's all you need from tonight, is guidance from us, right? We're not doing a motion or anything.
Basically, the regs say we can't sign off on a CO, even if they're going to post a performance bond, until the zoning commission authorizes staff. So you could take an action to authorize staff and say, you know, staff can sign off certificate of occupancies for units within phase one, subject to posting a performance bond, and, you know, we will work it out with the group on numbers, which will verify, they'll provide us an estimate, we'll work with the town engineer to make sure it's a realistic number to cover the area of work that needs to be completed. And we have, you have as-built for these buildings?
Yeah, so the way we do these larger sites is, once they're looking for COs, they basically start what will be their final as-built plan for the entire site at the end, and they'll put the buildings on with the dimensions to the property line, so that I can compare them, make sure they're being built in accordance with the approved plan. So I do have the buildings that are actually kind of in here, and the clubhouse are already on that as-built plan, so that part of the kind of sign-off is already completed, and that will be a working plan. That, Ugo will continue to have his survey or add on those buildings as we go forward. That's what we've done for Aspen Green, that's what we did for.
Dorset.
Dorset, so, yeah, Highcroft. So it kind of just works out nice, because as they're adding, and then at the end, kind of their final as-built is completed for them.
Nice.
And the only other thing I have before you is, we have a sidewalk plan. I wanted to make you aware of this before you take action. So the, the conditions of approval require that they show legal access to connect the development to the trail. They have, they were looking at going down Old Canal Way, that's what the original plan showed. However, they have an alternative that's been chosen, going, using the right-of-way of Latimer Lane, going down Latimer Lane to connect to the trail along the northern edge of Latimer Lane. That's just as a point of information to the commission, that they did change it, it looks like they're, so far, I mean, we received these plans this afternoon, it appears the work is within the right-of-way, so it does not trigger any improvements on private property. However, we're reviewing it, but I wanted the commission to be aware of that, that there's another condition.
So we have that drawing, okay?
It's in your, it should be in your staff. I apologize, it kind of buried you with a bunch of plans this evening.
It's good to see you.
I don't think we're ready to vote. I think we need something written down on all this. So if we can get staff to, and work with the applicant, and just putting together exactly, as you mentioned, the number of units, and just a little more detail on exactly what we're approving, and the performance bond, and so if you can just put that together.
You want totals on a performance bond, then?
Well, whatever you want for, yeah, for the, for the number of units. Because otherwise, it's a little complicated here.
You're not going to be for a month, however, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, your next meeting is until March 4.
Because of President's or something?
President's, yes.
President's.
Mike, I would appreciate if the document that you create identifies the buildings. I mean, these drawings, I have three drawings here that, I'm not sure what buildings we're trying to approve. I'm, I'm supportive of Dylan's, but we need to know, as Kevin is moving around, we need to know exactly what we're approving. I'm not sure which buildings, I just want to be clear. I'm not worried about it right now, but, yeah, there's too many drawings here. So these buildings seem to have labels. I see like AP-5B, that's a building. Put that one on list, and put this one, you know, building T121B, that's a building. Put that on list. Whatever they are, so these labels match. Okay. And I guess if they don't have units in them, like the clubhouse, that distinction would be helpful to.
TJ, can I ask you a question? What happened with the, now, where you were originally going to connect to the trail? Why was the switch to Latimer?
The distance, the integration of that with the southern side and the, the light situation at the south there.
Is that DOT, getting a light there? Okay. So Latimer, there's not a light there, is there?
No, but this is, this is, from, from the north side only. You go across, directly across the street at a light with a crossing to the tennis center. Then you take a left and come down, and then take a right on Latimer, and then you have the closest, easiest access to the rail trail, going both north and south.
Okay.
It's dramatically more accessible for everybody to do that.
Okay. Is that in keeping with the original, okay. This was so long, you know, the plans that we.
The original approval, the commission said either you go down Old Canal Way, or you provide your other plans just legal access. So if it was on private property, they would show some sort of either easement, purchase agreement, et cetera. This way, they're working in the right-of-way. I mean, it's, it's, at least they have room, and it doesn't involve any private deals with other landlords.
Gotcha. It's just a lot, it was a while ago to remember what that all was?
2015.
Yeah.
No, 2017.
Oh, maybe for that part.
The, the Form-based code in the approval was very meticulously detailed.
Yeah, exactly.
And the way it worked was, among all your zoning stuff in town, this has the most discretion in your cleaning department, your staff, to do it. There was one line that said that you can't allow a CO until 100% of everything is done, and that's why we're here, going through these issues with you.
Yep.
But, but it is, the spirit of the regulation and the approval does leave with your staff a lot of, a lot of opportunity to see what's consistent with it or not.
What's your thought, Kevin?
Well, you discussed with the client here, are they okay with going to March?
They have people who want to move in, March 1st. Not all of them, I mean, they're.
You have six units or any of them? Yeah, the first, the first nine, maybe seven out of the first nine.
What are we trying to do to?
I'm not even sure how we would word a motion here.
I think you could word it that you give staff permission to sign off on certificate of occupancies for units labeled TH26D and TH25A with a performance bond in place prior to the signing off on those COs.
Okay.
And the rest we'll deal with in March.
The rest we can deal with in March, yeah.
So can we just make a motion for, to incorporate what Robin just read? Okay. Anyone read that one? Me? Okay.
I'm still, still trying to figure it out.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Am we clear on what we're voting for here?
Yes, we're approving COs for phase one for those two buildings, TH26D and TH25A, with or subject to the performance bond, before the COs are given. So just those two buildings.
Just those two buildings, yeah.
We're authorizing the staff to approve the COs.
Yeah.
The commission's not.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
David, be on your agenda in March to continue this conversation for the rest of phase one.
I think we'll have the rest of the floor to see. We'll bring pictures.
Bring pictures. All right, next item on the agenda is request by attorney Christopher J. Smith, Walter and Pearson LLC for clarification of zone district designation on the town zone map concerning real deal, properties designated by the assessor as assessor's map. Assessor's map F-17 Block 201 and assessor's map F-17 Block 201 Lot 2.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Glidden, Ms. Newton, and Madam Clerk. For the record, my name is Chris Smith, and I am a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Walter Pearson, as a few weeks ago. And before you, representing Tom Evans, concerning two lots that are located on either side of Old Canal Way, fronting Hot Meadow, and you do have an excerpt from the zone map, we're, we're asking for a clarification of the zone district designation as it's shown on or depicted on the zone map. Currently, these, actually, probably the best way to do it is if you do, I saw that Robin was handing out the, so there's two lots, one is, as you'll see in the heading to the letter and on the agenda, one ends with Lot 002C, and the other one ends, and that's known as 171 Hot Meadow, and the other one ends with 002. So I just penned in on the zone map which one is 2C, and that's the one that's located to the north of Old Canal Way, and Lot, what is referred to as 2, is located to the south. As you can see on your zone district map, that they are designated in the residential design zone district, the RD zone. And, does everybody have that? I see you're kind of looking.
I don't see the numbers on this.
Oh, I apologize.
No, not today's.
They're in his packet?
Yeah.
Not in my packet, they're in his packet, which.
There's this, there's a cover letter.
Is it in your packet?
Okay, I'm sorry. There's a cover letter, and if you go to the second page, it's, it's the wider view of the zone map, and you can see Lot 2 is located to the north of Old Canal Way, and Lot 2C is to the south, and then we just blew it up a little better on the next page. And as you can see on your zone map, these two lots are designated in the RD zone, and we're respectfully submitting that they should actually be in the restricted industrial zone or the I-1 zone. And the reason, apparent, the apparent reason, and I know that Mr. Evans, my client, Tom, worked with Robin on Newton and looking at the history with this, but apparently, and I provided you with the minutes back, going back to 1983, when the Old Canal, Old Canal Place, I guess, was being proposed, and Lou Rome is actually, was representing the applicant, he indicates that the, originally, these two, there was a zone change to RD to permit this multifamily development known as Canal Place. And during that process, these two lots were included in the 125 acres, but during the process, these two lots were taken out of the zone change, so that they would remain as the light industrial, the I-1. And that's depicted, if you go after the exhibit, what I labeled as Exhibit B, and these are excerpts, and I walk you through this at the bottom of page one in my cover letter, but if you go to, there's actually minutes from three different meetings of this commission going back to 1983. I presume that nobody was on the commission at that point in time that's here today. I don't even want to tell you where I was. But if you go to the second page for the April 12th, 1983 meeting, this is the second page in Exhibit B, and you can see down towards the bottom, there's a reference, and I highlighted it in yellow, where it makes reference to the fact that there are revisions from the previous application not to include the I-1 zone in the, in the zone change. So in other words, these two lots that were then I-1.
Right.
Were taken out of the zone change to go to RD.
In order to get the approval for?
From what I understand, the zoning commission at that point.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, wasn't interested in having it rezoned, the I, the industrial zone rezoned to residential. And then that's reiterated again, if you go a few pages further, on the April 18th meeting, Mr. Rome states that the only difference between this application that was in front of the commission on April 18, 1983, is the fact that the, the request for zone change for the I-1 lots, these two lots, was taken out of this application. And then if you go to the next meeting, the May 2nd meeting, there's a motion to approve the zone change where these lots are not included in that motion, and then a review of the records going forward, not disclose, ever again, another application to rezone these two lots from the I-1 to any other zone, never mind the RD.
They should have stayed I-1?
Yes. So initially, they were part of this.
So weird.
What's that?
It's so weird.
It is.
It's very interesting.
But back in 1983, you know, people thought that there might be a need for industrial zone property, which, as we all know, doesn't really exist today, but, but this is just to clarify the zone map, that for some reason. But, but this is just to clarify the zone map, that for some reason, when the zone map was updated, these properties, these two lots were included as RD when in reality they are still the I-1, they were again deleted from it. Actually, if you look at the assessor's records, one lot is shown as industrial, the other one is RD. So there seems to be quite a bit of confusion, although the minutes again do reflect that these two lots, which were originally part of a zone change for the multifamily residential development, were taken out of that zone change application back in 1983.
And to, you agree with us that that was probably a mistake, an error in the map?
Yeah, so in my staff report, so I was wrong for all the minutes, even went further than 1983. In 1988, there was actually an application before the zoning commission for one of these lots, and they list it clearly as an I-1 zone and they actually had approved office spaces that has since expired. But it was obviously acknowledged and known by the zoning commission at the time that this was not included as part of that. And it was well established in the minutes. Unfortunately, I think what happened is they were supposed to have the developer at the time put a map in with the clerk's office showing the zone change, that never happened.
Sure.
So I'm sure it was just kind of estrapulated from whomever kind of updating the zone map and they included those parcels because they were on the original application. So under our rights, you guys have the final say in determining anything that is unclear. So they're just looking for that determination. I think it's, it's pretty well spelled out in the minutes that it should've not been changed under zoning map because it was never officially changed through the zone change
It should've never been part of that, of their property.
Correct, yeah.
And it makes sense that that's what happened.
Yes.
It was just a general sweep, especially from the photo.
In light of that subsequent application, it actually listed it as an I, which I was not aware of until just now.
Yeah, I have the minutes in front of me with my highlighting, so, yeah.
The approved in 88.
Are you the current owner?
Yeah.
So I have a draft motion?
No.
I have a draft motion for you guys at the end of the staff memo. I tried to word it in a way so that if the public is reading it, they kind of understand that you guys are not changing the zone, you're making the zone map correct to reflect what it should be, the appropriate zone. That was never changed.
Correct.
Yeah.
All the discussion, never changed. Is everybody-
Everyone clear on this?
Well, let me just be more, be more certain about it. What you're telling us, Robin, is that based on your research, there's an error in these maps and it's, there's no other explanation than it's a simple error and it exists over a long period of time.
Yes.
A lot of people should've known about it and did nothing.
Correct.
Now, we get these documents to look at for 15 minutes and we're going to vote to make the change that should've been made sometime in the last-
Thirty years.
Thirty years, yeah, pretty much. That's a nice shortened version of it.
But Robin, but Robin did perform a review of-
I've had months to look over these minutes and I do mean months. Poor Tom was very patient, knowing we're short staffed, so I continued to go look through the minutes on my own. He sent me a bunch of minutes because I really wanted to make sure that, you know, everything matched up and it truly was, you know, kind of similar to what Al Kholz Scribner's error, somebody updating the map and included them in when they should not have included them in. And that is what it is.
And what I have in the letter is based on, you know, Robin and Tom's research, direct research together, Robin, so.
I'm, I don't doubt that. My largest concern is that, I think it's a significant decision. I could be, am I the only one that didn't see any of this before the meeting started? Everybody else got the, nobody got the material before the meeting started. I think we should take some time and give this a little more thought or review so that the commission is making a decision, not simply relying on a report of staff that we have no firsthand knowledge of.
I'm comfortable because we rely on staff and this is what they do for a living and they reviewed it and to the effect that Robin even came up with additional minutes, not even here. So I'm comfortable with this, but I understand and I would, I would back you if you wanted to delay it.
Is there harm in delay after 30 years or 40 years of an incorrect assignment of the zone?
Even before I started negotiating with the Hartford seven years ago to buy it, I talked to Howard Beach and Howard Beach confirmed it was a mismatch. They knew it at the town, it was misspent all the way back, they just never, I don't know why, they just, they knew it was. It's always been, and the assessor's cards is I-1, I've got the assessor's cards going back for the last 15 years. I'm sorry, I'm not saying it, but, um, yeah, so it's, it's kind of a, I don't know that the staff knows better than me, but even the previous staffs knew it was just mark wrong. So I don't, I, I just, I, I-
I'm sympathetic.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
What else would be true in the meantime?
Oh, read it, read it. Robin's already-
I look at it as it's an administrative, it was something that never should've been designated RD.
You're, I would add just to step, you're, you're confident this is the case?
Thousand percent.
I mean, that to me, for my sake is satisfactory. I mean, we have relied on staff, they tend to advise us appropriately for, you know, the CEO to tell me it's a thousand percent, she's a thousand percent. Sure, I, I have to say that's, I, I would have confidence in, in voting in the affirmative for this. I, I also am sympathetic to what you said. I don't, I'm always uncomfortable when things like this, it's been 30 years, I mean, I, I do hear your point as well and then we're handed this and we're supposed to go on it. But knowing that months of research had gone into it and now Robin is, is a thousand percent, I would, I would be confident in voting affirmatively. It's just my two cents.
I hear what you're saying, but I, the operation of the commission and the responsibility we have under Connecticut statute is to make a decision. We're not making decisions, we're just relying on, because we haven't read the material, we haven't digested it, we haven't really thought about it. We're just taking Robin's recommendation, voting yes, passing on.
Well, I think the previous commissions made the decision, it's just the map, the person that made the map didn't-
I'm not sure there's, there's a record of a commission making a decision.
I think they voted here and they just did not include the property, the lots. Anyways, but that's, you know, was, there was an application, there were the two lots and then the commission approved the application without the two lots being in the approval. That was, that's why that's in.
The person I'd rather see it as industrial than-
Yes.
Than more apartments. Are we comfortable making the motion?
Yep.
Let's make the motion.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the incorrect zoning designation for lots known as assessor's map F-17 Block 201 Lot 002C and assessor's map F-17 Block 201 Lot 002, shown on the current zoning map as an RD residential design district and to request staff to update the zoning map to accurately reflect the zoning designation of I-1, which is restricted industrial.
I'll second. Any more discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, got one opposed.
I don't want to belabor it, I don't know.
No, it's a decision to, go ahead.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, then we're, have a, next item on the agenda is a discussion of short-term rentals ordinance. This is a lot, refer to the last one you gave us.
So, yes, so if, the last meeting I attended with you guys, we kind of showed you what is like, was a very preliminary kind of working draft ordinance that really hasn't had much work done on it. And what we took away from that was, we talked about maybe an outline of some concerns that you guys had so that you could give feedback for that process to the board of selectmen when it eventually gets there as to what you as a zoning commission would like to see. So I kind of went back and where we had put notes, where we kind of were talking about stuff and I kind of picked those out, so to speak. So these were kind of the major points, you know, we talked about owner, doesn't need to be owner occupied, the age of the person renting, primary residence versus secondary, neighbor notification, parking requirements. This is all just kind of for you guys as a board to kind of give your overall feedback as to what you might like to see in an ordinance as it's being drafted. You certainly can, we can talk about it tonight or you guys can take my sheet back with you and make notes on it and we can have further discussion at the next meeting on it. But I figured this gives a nice outline so we can kind of have those talking points.
And then the, the thought is, this will go to Board of Selectmen to-
So the thought is, since you guys as a zoning commission are really going to essentially be, would approve the use and the zoning regulations so that a ordinance could be created, I think it's appropriate to take back what you guys can agree on collectively as a board and incorporate those thoughts and ideas into the ordinance. And what we submit to the board of selectmen as a draft would be incorporated of whatever you guys would like to see versus kind of taking those and saying this is what you would like to see and not have them put in there already. So I'd like to incorporate them in and then make that my draft.
So if I may, so we would provide in essence advice and counsel-
Yep.
To the board of selectmen-
Yes.
So that they could then draft a, an ordinance that would-
Right, yep.
If that's the part that we had agreed, that's the way we wanted to go with it. So now we're coming up with specifics?
Yep.
Okay.
And when we did the owner occupied, there was a question as to whether the owner had to be in the building at the time.
Yes.
And I'm thinking that Airbnb, that's not typical.
Correct.
But primary residence, I think, would be a good solution to that. So-
Well, okay. So let's say you spend half the year in Florida and half the year here. Okay, or more of the year down there, can you still lease it out the rest of the year here, even though it's not your primary?
We have a maximum of 100 days or something.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Okay, but they don't have to be on-
At home.
Yeah, on premises at the time of the, of the lease, of the rental. Okay, because I don't think that was clear last time.
No, I mean, that's kind of a, so in some, as you know, it's kind of nationwide, there're bigger cities that you really can find ordinance on. In some of them, it does have to be owner occupied and others, it does not. Of course, you know, one of the ones that we've got the most complaints on in town is somebody who leaves their home and rents it out and then comes back. That person, however, also has an accessory apartment, so they could potentially rent out the accessory apartment and still stay on the premises or stay in the accessory apartment and rent out the other half. So I don't think, no matter what we come up with, there's going to be, like you said, I spent six months in Florida and I have a house up here for six months, so there's going to be those kind of outliers. But I guess the major question is, does somebody have to be on the premises while, you know, the house is being rented during your M and B?
The issue is, what are we trying to solve here?
Right.
If we're trying to solve the question, the irate resident who brought this to everyone's attention, the concern they have, nothing less than some form of owner occupied is going to answer that. The owner's going to have to be in the auxiliary unit, the accessory unit or in the primary residence, it's going to be after one or the other.
Well, it doesn't sound like that owner, though, would be very responsive even if they were home. You know?
I'm not talking about the owner that, that's sort of the culprit in the stories that we hear. I'm talking about the one who's made the complaint widely known. You're not going to satisfy that resident with something that allows somebody to buy property as, is going on in some cities around the country. People are just buying units, they're never moving in, they're using them as rentals.
Right, and that's what I was trying to avoid, right.
Right, exactly, but unless there's some requirement, something about-
We do have two of those in town, just so you know. There's two of the Airbnb rentals are not primary residence, they were bought strictly for commercial purposes upfront.
See that, and then be okay with me in a residential area.
And your connection of having the whole owner occupied, at least then you have a chain of custody, should something go wrong?
Right.
That you know that, you know, it's not an owner who's living out of town and this is just a strict investment property, that they may or may not care what goes on. It's someone who's invested, who you can't call, there's some sort of way, should something, you know, like the, the big party that happens, that, that we're getting parking complaints, we're getting noise complaints, we're, you know, under current zoning regs, we don't really have the teeth to go after those things. In ordinance, however, that gives the teeth.
Yep.
How do you monitor whether the person's living there or even there on the, at the time of the, of the rental?
I don't-
There really is no way. Essentially what happens, it's an after the fact complaint based kind of follow-up. These ordinances have, if you look, you know, conduct stipulations is one of the things that's at the bottom. Basically, if somebody makes a complaint, you know, you have to follow them. And so it is kind of an enforcement issue ultimately. You know, really the question is just, do we want it to have to be owner occupied? And I'm not talking primary versus secondary residence because that's another category. So it's, do, do we, are we going to require, should we require that it be owner occupied during the rental?
So I think that's a little bit different than what you guys had said. Owner occupied while somebody's there is different than it's an owner occupied, yes, that's, so that, so I guess if, if we went down this road, primary residency would be a different thing than saying owner, it could be not owner occupied during the rental. Like Mr. and Mrs. Smith don't have to be there when they rent it out, but it is their primary resi-, you know what I mean? We could say yes to one and, and no to another, something like.
Yep.
The scenario I was trying to illustrate, the owner of the property would have their choice of which unit to be in, the primary residence or the accessory dwelling. But they need to be on the premises, not in Florida or California.
And that's the killer case.
But exactly, but, but not all of them, so that's fine, but that's because there's a detached, you're saying there's an accessory, not all of them are going to have that detached. So now, where are you going to have the owner be while the person renting is there?
No, but with the zoning commission, we can require that the short-term rentals only be on dwellings.
Accessory.
Have the two.
We don't regulate, what's the current reg as far as a rental? If I wanted to just rent my house for next year, we don't have, we don't have any, we don't monitor that.
No.
And so I don't think we should overreact here because of one complaint and really-
Kevin, provided you didn't have more than five unrelated people living in the house, you have one house per community. That's one thing we do regulate.
Yeah.
And we have received those complaints in the past and enforcement issue. In the five years I've been here, I had at least two cases that I had people that were renting houses and there were more than five unrelated people living in the house. So it, that shows its face occasionally. But I guess, like I said, your owner occupied, it just gives a chain of custody and sort of a connection. And you, one thing you need just to remember, I know it's wearing a different hat, under the ordinance provision, let's say it's an ordinance that says it's a yearly permitting process, annual permit, so you have this, this negligent land, this property owner who's absentee and likes to just let things go wild and is just the nuisance property of the neighborhood. Well, then he or she would go up for an annual renewal of a permit under an ordinance versus zoning regs.
Right.
Zoning regs, it's, you get your approval and-
That's it.
It's very tough to, to take it back.
Right.
It goes through court, et cetera, through an ordinance, through Title VII of the general state statutes that gives the, the community, it's basically a police power, gives us a lot of latitude to say no. We can turn and say, you know what, you're a public nuisance, we're, we're getting police complaints, we're getting et cetera, et cetera complaints, you're not getting your permit again. You cannot do this use again.
That's why we went with the ordinance.
That's, that's the main thing, there's a little more teeth in the, so, so them saying like, if you want to say it needs to be owner occupied or-
At the time of the rental? I don't know what you mean.
Yeah, we keep using that word.
Yeah, I want to be careful.
I guess, I guess that's more just to clarify as a concern of owner occupied, you can recommend either way. Because we've seen, we've seen ordinances that say both.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, personally, I'm in favor of requiring that the owner be there.
No, but I think that- No, but I think then I would be, I would still want it to be the primary residence. Do you know what I'm saying? I'm okay with them not being there at the time of, but that, having it as a secondary, I think that's where it's gonna be, they're not here. They're just not here at all.
Absentee.
Yes, yes. So I'm with you. I, I don't think they have to be in the place at the time.
And the two that you know of, are they in residential areas or are they in?
Yeah, all of our.
And that's what's the concern.
All of our Airbnbs are in residential areas.
Yeah.
They are.
Some are better situated.
'Cause I can see that happening in, in a business area, you know, where there's a house that's.
Well, there's a farm and there's parking and that one is, you know, maybe not the same disturbance because it's, there's accessory unit and there's parking and it's not, this is, you know, a residential right next to neighbors. That's the thing. But we can't, we don't have any say over that, so we have to stick with parameters. Which is why we decided to do the ordinance. Neighbor notification?
So neighbor notification, so a lot of these ordinance have like, kind of similar to our butter notifications when we have public hearings, that neighbors within such and such a distance from the subject property are notified of the license that the person is being granted so that they know that this use is taking place. Kind of like, you know, for instance, some of the ones that we've had, we had a lot of people constantly saying, hey, there's, you know, five cars or different cars, people are coming in every, you know, in and out every weekend. It kind of gives them notice so that they would know that this use is taking place so that you're not getting those.
No, I think that's great. Definitely.
Yeah, I think that one's needed here.
Yeah.
You know, people surprised.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Parking, I don't know how you say that for, is it, do you just?
Most of the ones that we saw, the parking was based on the bedroom.
I was just gonna say that. So if it's a two-bedroom rental.
You have to have two extra parking spots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it could be a situation where someone's doing Airbnb and say they're living in their house only renting out a room or two.
Yeah, that's fine.
And not, they're not qualifying under our definition of boarding house, so it's a lot.
Correct.
Right.
That's what the parking requirements are coming to play.
Yeah.
So three bedrooms, four bedrooms, they would have, they'd have to have more parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I definitely think so.
Well, okay, when you say that, what does that mean though? So if you have a two-car garage, can you park four cars in the driveway? Are you saying we actually have to have separate, you know?
Not saying they have to have separate parking, they just have to show, so say it was a six-bedroom house. You know, I picked a big number. They have to show that they could potentially accommodate six vehicles in their driveway.
In the driveway, yeah.
Not on the street.
Not on the street, no, on-street parking, yeah.
Neighbor complaints, so that's fair, okay.
So if you had.
You don't want them parking on the grass.
Because you have it in a box.
Yeah, if you had.
They're in the box and as long as you can support it within the box.
Absolutely.
It's appropriate.
Okay.
Once you're outside the box.
So if you have six, yeah, if you have six bedrooms, but you can only support two vehicles, then that's, you know, that's gonna be the maximum occupancy based on the parking in the bedrooms requirement.
No, I think that's good.
So they, they need to kind of coincide.
Unless they pay for the yard.
Yeah, that's okay. That's super, yeah, that's okay.
They could do that.
Yep. Good.
What are, what is differences between single family or multifamily?
So that's just something that came up in a lot of the ordinances that we read. I will tell you that a lot of multifamily, for instance, like the townhouses at Dorset Crossing, we actually did have an Airbnb there, but they're not allowed to do that. So once Dorset, you know, got that information, they basically just said, you're gonna take it down or you're addicted.
So the bigger question, do you say that you're part of the homeowners association?
HOA.
HOA. If they're going through a permitting process, are you gonna treat them different, meaning the HOA has to, similar, similar, like right now, let's say you're an HOA and you wanna add a deck onto your house. We require that the HOA approve the deck since it's exterior.
Yes.
So this is another thing, you know, it's, it's kind of built-in neighbor notification.
I would say yes.
So you don't get in a position where.
Yes.
An HOA saying, this violates our bylaws.
They have to say that it's okay and we have a good amount of those. That's why I think that's so important here. We have a good amount of pods of condos, so that's something that, that should be within their rules. So not, I don't know if Donna was thinking this too, not multifamily and it does in a two-family home or three-family home. I don't think we have so many of those, but it's more multifamily, you're talking about a condo, a.
Right.
Yes.
Something like that.
Association.
So that's great. It adds another qualifier. Maximum occupancy, is that?
That's again, based on the number of bedrooms, so you know, if you have four bedrooms, you know, your maximum occupancy might be, you know, eight, eight adults. That's kind of subjective and it's different depending on what ordinance you read. But if you don't put in a maximum occupancy, you know, it might be kind of self-policed by the people who are putting on Airbnb. I know, like I've seen it where it tells you what the maximum occupancy for the house is. But otherwise, I mean, they could have, you know, four bedrooms, say I'm gonna have 20 people here. We're gonna sit on the floor, we're gonna sit on the couch.
See, and I would, I would want that, but I'm, but I, I welcome anybody else to say. I've been to quite a few Airbnbs with family members, but they say it's like a four or five-bedroom and they say sleeps 12 or sleeps, you know, 18, they include finished basements, they include couches because that's what they want. They wanna be able to get in the maximum amount of people. But I don't know that that's what we would want. So I would be okay with putting a number or, you know, putting that in there.
The language that is, that you see the most, it's based on bedrooms.
Okay.
So it would not be, you know, table, couches.
Including other spaces.
Yeah, other spaces. It would be strictly.
But how many people per bed?
That's the part that differs depending, like some, some cities broke it down, adult versus kid. You know, beds in the bedrooms, types of beds, that kind of stuff, so it can get very technical.
Yeah, 'cause you could get a bedroom with four beds, single beds and, you know, there's certain rooms like that.
Yeah, and you know, some of them have, you know, a bedroom with two sets of bunk beds.
Yep.
You know, geared more towards kids.
Yep.
So yeah, you're gonna fit four kids in there. So it does definitely vary and we can come up with some different language to look at.
Right, but you would come in, in your licensing process and you would say how many, you know, you're, you're asking for approval.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you would have to prove.
And that would be based on.
So the ordinance would give the maximum.
Yeah.
Well, no, you know, the ordinance would give you guidance as far as the, the number, but then your actually application for a license, you would say, you know, I'm gonna do, I have four bedrooms, I'm gonna do eight or I'm gonna do.
Ten or whatever, depending on what it is.
Yeah, because, you know, I have a dormitory type.
Yep, yep.
Do you have enough feedback from us or?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely, so owner occupied, just, I wanna make sure that we come back with something you guys are all in agreement with.
We're not in agreement.
I know you're not. I know you're not in agreement as a full board, but owner occupied during the stay.
Yeah, what are your thoughts?
Well.
During having renters there.
I think there needs to be some sort of concept of owner presence.
Okay.
There's different ways that can, that that can happen, that I've seen in various regulations I've looked at. But one thing on that particular point is I've heard Dave say a number of times where we've had brief discussion of this, these issues. He feels, I think, I can't remember which one, I think he feels strongly there shouldn't be any owner presence required.
Yeah.
And so he might have a reason for that. I think.
Because he does.
I'm having trouble with the idea that we'll just talk about this and ultimately whoever speaks the loudest, that's where we're gonna go. I'm, I know, we've talked also in the past about how few touchpoints there are out there in the world, you know. The communities of our size, we have zero examples as far as they know.
Yep.
And in the state of Connecticut with 169 towns and cities, there's only one example and that's the city of Hartford. So, you know, I still, I'm, I'm not 100% convinced that we're doing the right thing trying to patch something together when there's so little guidance out there. But if the Board of Selectmen are willing to take this on, I guess, I'm, I don't know what to say, but.
Yeah, I don't think.
We're trying to take little pieces of information and opinions that all of us have and weave it together into something and say, this is gonna be the right thing.
We're trying to establish the ordinance, which we've already to this point, this is not something we're deciding today. This is what we've been going over for a year, two years to get to this point, to figure out how we deal with something that's not in our regulations and we don't want to change it or make it part of the regulations. This is giving us a tool and like you said, then it's giving something to the Board of Selectmen that can be regulated. At this point, we don't have anything. So you're right, we're, we're creating something that does not exist, absolutely. But, but we've all established that.
I guess, if that's where, where we're going off from, I'd say the town attorney should be doing this or leading this.
We've.
Well, he will review it, but he, I mean, he essentially did the same thing that we've done and that's, went and pulled a bunch of ordinances and said, here you go. Honestly, you guys are the experts of your community. So from a feedback perspective, yes, there's a limited number of you that serve on this board, but you are the voice when it comes to land use issues. So yes, you're probably not all gonna agree on every category, but the goal is to be able to get at least a consensus on some of the items and start drafting a working document that could be shared and you could even have workshops, you know what I mean, to discuss with public input at that point before it ever gets to an ordinance. It's probably not gonna be perfect. It's, it's, you know, each community should be drafting their own. It shouldn't be based on, you know, what other places are doing because each community is different. So, you know, I think you're gonna put your best effort forward, you're gonna hopefully get feedback from as many places as we can, including public feedback and kind of intermingle as many of those ideas as we can to come up with hopefully what will be a usable, enforceable document, knowing that we may figure out after a year or two that we need to change parts of it because they're, they're not working out the way we intended.
That's what I was thinking, there's, there's no experts yet to see.
No.
This is, all, all the communities are in same boat, right?
Right, you know.
Yeah, we're all trying to figure it out.
Now, even though there's no regulations, it's not that, it's not happening.
Yeah, I mean, it's happening and, you know, obviously it's something that came to the forefront because of complaints, specific, a specific complaint, but they're not the only ones. We actually have other ones in our office that were just kind of pushed to the side because they weren't as public about them. So it is something that we have to address and I think kind of the going back and forth. And like I said, eventually, once we have what I would consider a good working draft, you know, holding a workshop, inviting the public and getting the feedback.
We're sending it to the attorney again.
Sending it to the attorney, both owners and, and, you know, owners of Airbnbs and residents and taking their considerations in how this works. So, but, you know, you guys are the experts as far as the town, as far as land use decisions. So I think that, you know, as we're developing this, your feedback is kind of the most important at this point in time to get that going.
Well, it'd also be good to know what the other complaints were from the, if, you know, if a neighbor complained, was it all, you know, we've, we've heard the one.
Right.
Are other people having problems with too many people? Is that typical one?
Not too many, so we had another one, which was an accessory dwelling unit, an approved accessory dwelling unit. And the complaints from the neighbors was kind of the behavior of the people who were renting the unit. You know, there, there's no fencing or privacy between the two houses and he had a teenage daughter and there was a, you know, not good behavior back and forth. So that kind of started that kind of, you know, there's transient people coming into our neighborhood. A lot of it has to do with the fact that there are people coming into my residential neighborhood. They're transient in nature, we don't know who they are. It's kind of that safety, you know, aspect of it, which is totally understandable.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's kind of the complaints that we've got. I can't remember where the other one was, there was one other one.
So in that one, you have a complaint, but the owner was on premises.
Was owner occupied.
So that, you know, just having the owner occupied doesn't solve the problem.
No.
To put it into perspective, that was owner occupied.
That one hears the problems, philosophical differences, they have this transient population that's coming in.
That's right. That's right.
And then you have that other things that's reviewed.
I thi- I think by its very nature, we can't, the ordinance, like, our response to it is reactive.
That's right.
I mean, we can, it's, it's strictly reactive because if there's no problem, there's no problem, but now there's a problem.
So we have to establish.
So we have to establish something. But I think what's important with the ordinance is to, is to establish in essence a baseline of what we as a community deem acceptable.
Sure.
An acceptable behavior and an acceptable way of doing this according to our needs, according to our town, according to what, you know, as elected officials, people tell us. And then that's, that's our established norm. But will there be complaints? Absolutely, because people are gonna come in and do things and it's, it's unfortunate. People are people and then we get a complaint and then we have to react. But if there's no established norm, then, then we have no recourse. So I think, I think it's very important to do that. And I think these major points in here are very, very good.
Definitely.
You know, broad categories to, to make that so. So I think, I think it's a great idea and I think a lot of these ideas are important. I, I would, you know, I mean, owner occupied, I don't know, I certainly agree with the primary residence. I don't want anybody kind of buying rental properties and then just renting them out on Airbnb and cashing in. But even with the owner there or not, it's, if somebody, if there's a problem, there's gonna be a complaint. So we just need to make sure we have that framework so that we can respond appropriately, however that would be.
And we did talk about age. Age of the person renting.
The document that we had handed out to you guys at that meeting, it said 18. It was crossed off. You guys said 21 was kind of the consensus.
Or 25, something like that, like.
25.
Actually, you have a hard time getting an Airbnb unless you're over 21.
Correct, because of their rules.
Kids who've tried.
Yes, because of their rules.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I still think we should put it. I do think we should have a minimum age in there. Even if it's for the residents to know that we are putting this age on there, even if Airbnb is not.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, have we got enough feedback for you?
Yeah, then we can start drafting something and then.
Thank you.
Keep bringing it back to you guys.
How many do we have in Simsbury that you're aware of?
16.
What do they come for? No offense, but I mean.
Like honestly.
Actually, it's a place you really, I mean, there's.
Well, it's a school, you could come for, you know, a Westminster.
Yep.
Well, so then my point would be, they're not going to be used that frequently.
And some of them are.
So I know like the farm that has it, they, they do that as a vacation.
Yeah, right.
That's kind of an outlier in the sort of tradition.
That's not in a neighborhood, really.
No, Airbnb rentals, but technically it is an Airbnb rental.
Right, right.
Um, I can tell you the, you know, the, the one that we're kind of all very familiar with because of the complaints. The draw to that one, believe it or not, I think it's just because it's an old barn.
Yep.
And people think it's really cool.
So they're gonna act like animals.
And people probably not from this area, so it's, it's charming, it's, it's different.
Yeah, like I saw some posts on Instagram particular to that property and it was like, you know, the barn in the middle of nowhere and, you know, I think it's just kind of this nostalgic nature of that particular property.
Here's a question then, if you have a barn Airbnb, are they prohibited from having events when they rent?
So, um.
You took that one off.
That actually wasn't in the, the actual outline for that ordinance, but we could talk about if you could have events and, you know, kind of based on what we've come into, I would probably advise against that.
No, that's what I'm saying. I would.
I agree.
I'm gonna add that as number nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
When you have things like barns.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, what qualifies as an, as an event? 'Cause I think you said no outdoor activities or something. You know, and why wouldn't you allow a barbecue, you know?
Yeah, I mean, so.
Perhaps you can have a wedding and you can have.
Barbecue's an event, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, so I, I think you need to.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to kind of look at the wording of that because, you know, if I'm having, let's just say I'm having 10 people in a house, it's a family reunion. Obviously, if they're gonna go sit on the back patio or if there's a pool, you know, they're gonna use those amenities that are associated with that. I think what we wanna shy away from is I'm renting this house and now I'm gonna have a party with 100 of my closest friends.
That's right.
And they're gonna come on to the site.
Or a wedding, or a, you know, or, yeah.
You're doubling, tripling the population that's renting.
Yes, yeah.
That seems acceptable for that.
So we'll, we'll look into how, how that can be worded. I'm sure it's probably been dealt with in, in some of the ordinances that we have. So we'll talk to Boggy about that.
Establish a maximum.
And we talked about maximum days. I know you didn't have it on there, but you knew.
Yeah, that's not on there, 'cause I wasn't like a point where we kind of discussed a lot of it. It seemed like, like there was consensus for a maximum number of days, so I did put it on this. But that will be in the draft that I bring back to you guys. Yes.
I don't know, I don't even know where it was.
We'll talk about it after.
The maximum days?
No.
Oh, oh.
The location.
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on. Correspondence, we have a letter here from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies for their 71st Annual Conference, March 28th. Now, this is different than the training one in March.
Oh, yes.
Would you like to go to the aqua turf that evening and pretend to meet? So contact our office, we'll sign up and meet.
And they do awards?
Yeah.
Yes.
Not you guys, not this year? Just checking.
No.
We need to know. We need to know.
We'll run, we'll run troops up. We'll run, we'll run the troops up.
That's cool, that's very cool.
Probably doesn't know I nominated her.
You better know.
And, and the other one is, is one, because I didn't get back.
March 23rd.
March 23rd.
For the training, bless you.
Yeah, yeah.
Wesleyan University.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Whoever's interested, this commission, I don't know if we've received any.
I did that, I did that one when I was on CBA, it was, it was very good.
Chris usually has a.
It's a pretty in-depth.
Presenters.
Yeah, he's one of the presenters, it is really good.
Covers a broad range of things, it was, it was excellent.
They do update it, you know, it's not like if you've gone before and it's five years ago, you're going to hear the same stuff over again. Basically, it's each category, so there's planning, there's zoning, there's zoning board of appeals, there's wetlands. Each will be updated with any new case law, any new legislation that's been put in, so it really kind of keeps you abreast of.
It's really good stories, too.
Yes, very good stories.
You know, not only just.
Might be talking about us.
How to run the meetings, there's FOI sort of mentioned, conflict of interest, predisposition. So, it's, it's, it's a Saturday, but it's worth.
Yeah.
It was good.
So, if you're interested, we will register you and pay for your registration to attend this.
Look, Wesley. Okay, is that?
That's it.
That's it?
I guess I will make my regular motion, would you?
I will, I make, yeah, second.
All the favor?
Whatever you need.
Mike, all this can be recycled?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.